Welcome, I'll call to order the meeting. I suppose the first thing we're gonna do is see if we have any requests to remove items from the consent agenda for discussion.
I have nothing.
Joy?
Seven A, or seven, all of seven.
Okay.
All of seven.
Isn't it just A and B?
Yes, you're right.
Also seven A.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we will have the presidents report. Oh, that's me.
I'm the president.
I want to first of all, thank everybody in advance for your patience with me this evening. And as we move forward into this presidency, I am very excited to get to fill this role. I'm very excited to get to serve again another year with you all. I just wanted to mention that we will have some new committee assignments. They are in the packet, so hopefully you all got a chance to see them. If there's anything that doesn't feel comfortable to you, please let me know and we can talk about that. And as committee meetings come up, Tara will probably reach out and get in touch to set up those meetings and make sure that everybody can attend. I also just want to remind everybody that tomorrow begins the winter reading challenge here at the library. I'm sure you're all ready to sign up and read as much as you can and explore different genres. There are also prizes, so that's always very exciting. And I don't really know what the prizes are. I only know that in the past, the prizes for youth services have been some stuffed animals and
Books.
There have been some, yeah, there's like a bag of books is one of the prizes. All very exciting things. And so as I kick off this presidency, again, thank you for your confidence, but also for your patience with me. And now I will turn it over to Tara.
Thank you. Well, you, speaking of the winter reading challenge, make sure you check out the display case that you may not know about, which is outside of the local history room. The adult services staff is responsible for that display case and they've done something completely different this year than they've ever done before to promote the winter reading challenge. So before you leave tonight, check it out.
Okay.
You know, now that you mentioned that, I was so impressed by the watercolors by Jerry.
Yeah, I said the same thing.
He's a very, very good artist. In fact, I looked for him when I was here just to tell him that he wasn't around and but that was really quite surprising. You know, you meet somebody and then you don't realize that they have this talent that you may not be aware of. It was, that's interesting, so.
While I was the facilities department head over the summer, Jerry would draw diagrams of pipes and things that needed to be fixed and explain to me what was broken and what needed to be fixed. And it was very helpful.
We have some great talent on our staff.
Honestly, there's some other great stuff.
Around the table, yes.
Around the table.
Lyndon does great encaustic painting. Shayna, who has been in our meetings before, does crocheting. There were some line drawings, yeah, there's.
There was some ceramics too, that was really high quality.
Oh, yeah, Marty does that, does that stuff too.
Yes, that display is coming on the heels of a staff craft sale that was held. So staff brought in their wares and sold them to the rest of us. And we also had a bake sale, so that was coordinated by SOC and a way to raise money for SOC and for the artisans as well.
Sure.
Also this month, our staff training, we do a monthly staff training. The topic this month was the friends. So staff got to learn all about who the friends are, what they do, and how they grant items on the wish list. A couple of friends' members came to the training, so staff, they got to meet some staff. It was a really nice exchange and conversation for both sides. And the friends continue to just go gangbusters. They have 330 members, which is a high.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, yeah. And every month, they're getting over $5,000 in sales. They're expanding their vintage book sales and their online sales. They continue to ask people to round up and make money there. And then any donated items that they can't sell or don't sell, they're continuing to find good homes for those around the area. Okay, friends. So for some of you, you will recognize this program item, but others of you who are new, we have our photo contest, which is opening up in January. This is our seventh annual photo contest. It's something we started doing, yeah, some years ago. I think it was Judy's idea. It will open January 30th, so about a month away. The theme this year is celebrating the past, embracing the future. And we revealed that theme at the end of last year's photo contest at the request of some of the participants who, we tell people that their photos need to be taken from the end of the previous contest through the deadline of the current one, which will be end of March-ish. And people had expressed that if they knew the theme over the summer, they could take photos during that time. So that's that. You'll be hearing more about that as the weeks go on. It'll be in the newsletter. And the reception is April 29th, Saturday, April 29th at 2:00 PM. And I hope that you can all attend as it's a really lovely time to interact with our community and for them to get to know you, so we can vote for them.
What is the cutoff date for the photographs?
It is.
If you don't know, that's okay, I'm just curious.
I can't remember what it is gonna be.
Okay.
Catherine and I just sorted this out the other day, but I can't, I don't wanna.
And the same judges, Nancy and?
I'm gonna ask all of them, yeah.
Good.
So what was the theme again, celebrating the past?
Embracing the future.
Embracing the future, not fearing the future.
No. No, we're a very positive team.
So that's, yeah, that's nice and broad. People can really, it sounds like people can really go with that.
Yeah, I think it's perfect for our strategic plan too, a time when we're building on what's happened in the past and moving forward into the future. I think that we've mentioned with you all a couple of times that we are implementing two-factor authentication on all of our Microsoft accounts. That includes all of you. So be looking for an email from Paul Zink over the next couple of weeks. He's gonna reach out to each of you and find out whether, what's gonna work for you to help have him walk through how this is gonna work and make sure it's all gonna be fine. It's gonna be fine.
Okay. We would have to use that on what, our iPads?
Yes, yeah.
It's actually, it's very simple. I mean, I don't know how many places use it now, but I'm.
Well, oh, right. I mean, yes, I've encountered that, but it's just like you open the iPad and there, everything's already there.
I'll walk you through it.
Okay, yeah. No, I know he's been very helpful in the past, yeah.
You may have mentioned in the press mention, or you may have noticed in the press mention section of the board packet, that there's an article about America's star libraries from Library Journal. And we were named as a star.
I know.
For the first time.
For the first time. We have never been named a star library. Library Journal ranks public libraries on eight different statistical benchmarks and then gives them stars. They're grouped by budget size is how they do their comparisons. This year, we've never been on it because one of the big factors is circulation. And our circulation is always on the low side because we have a relatively small service area, especially in comparison to our budget. So we've never made it on this list. I was, so I was kinda surprised. And reading through the preamble, it talks about how the pandemic really disrupted the ratings this year. And depending on when your reporting year fell and how it played in with the pandemic that really jumbled everything up. So I'm pretty sure the reporting year that they were using would be our fiscal year 2019, 2020, which would have ended March 2020, three weeks into the pandemic. And so we, our statistics are really, really good compared to a library that maybe had all that whole pandemic year in their reporting year. So, you know, it's kind of a caveat, but we'll take it. We're gonna milk this recognition. We're gonna send out a press release and see what kind of pickup we can get out of that.
And it's well deserved.
Yeah, yeah. And then lastly, I wanted to mention that last week, there was a community forum on the security of the Jewish community. It was put on by the Jewish Federation. Danny clued me into this security forum that was held at Temple Beth El to address the incident that happened on February, I keep saying February, December 2nd. Do you all know about this incident?
No.
A man rolled up in a van to Temple Beth El on the morning of Friday, December 2nd, and while people were doing like daycare drop-off, made a lot of really ugly antisemitic remarks to the parents and children that were dropping off their children. He was later apprehended by the police and he videoed the whole event and uploaded it to his social media. Because that video exists, there was a lot of security, a lot of scrutiny over this incident and a lot of criticism of the police for their handling of it. And so Chief Gallagher has had a couple of opportunities to address the allegations and the scrutiny. And this was a forum to bring together the Jewish community and the law enforcement community and rehash the whole situation, address the concerns of the community. And the message was loud and clear to me from the law enforcement community that they stand with the Jewish community, that this kind of hate will not be tolerated. And the man is being charged with ethnic intimidation and they're charging it as a hate crime. So I was glad that I was able to go to the event and hear what was said and hear people's concerns. But unfortunate that it even has to happen.
So a number of, a lot of the children ended up in the film that was posted online. That's the issue.
No, no. What was posted online was this man's interaction with the Bloomfield Township police.
Oh, I misunderstood that.
It was kind of like a traffic stop after he had exited the property.
Oh.
And they were practicing de-escalation techniques, so their goal was just get this guy in movement. They didn't understand the scope of the issue at that moment in time.
I see now, thank you.
And that is all I have for my report.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now it is time for our call to the public. And that is you, Deb.
Oh, Deb.
Do you have any, any SOC reports to share?
I just brought a little, couple notes. I was gonna say that we, as you mentioned, our bake sale went really well. We had eight participants and we're planning a hot chocolate pastry bar, January 26th percent.
Wow, I'm sorry, when?
January 26th. Kinda goes through the winter, so hopefully it doesn't snow that day.
It might.
It might.
That makes it overall all more special.
Right.
They trek through, yeah, cause they park in my space.
It's a really work at it to get your hot chocolate.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, and yeah, we had good numbers and we've heard good things about the holiday party. It was a lot of fun, I was there and you were very entertaining. Very entertaining.
She always is.
Yeah, it's true.
It was fun.
Yeah, it was. It was very unique. Yeah, I kinda came late to SOC, so I can't really take a lot of credit for the planning. I feel like that was mostly Laura.
It was actually, it was like, yeah, two years ago.
It was actually Amanda Carroll, two years ago, yeah.
It was Amanda.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we've had two vacancies on SOC in the middle of the year, which has never happened since I've worked here.
No, still can't.
So yeah, Deb has stepped in and Amanda Carroll has stepped back in. And you might know her as Cherry Bomb.
Cherry Bomb, okay, yeah.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you very much. And I don't believe we have any unfinished business to attend to, is that correct? Okay, so we'll move into our new business and we have quite a bit tonight. And the first thing that we are going to talk about is PA 152. Tara's gonna tell everybody about that.
Yes. There are a lot of items, but I think they should go over them, we'll see. All right, PA 152. So I know for some of you, this is old news, but I think Shane and Joy and Keith have never heard this spiel before. So PA 152 is a Michigan law that was enacted by Governor Snyder in like 13, 14, and it requires public employees to pay part of their healthcare premiums. It gives public entities three options to determine how much the public employees have to pay. Option one is a hard cap option, which just, there's math involved and an amount is determined to be the hard cap of what the entity will pay and then the rest would be passed on to the employees. The second option is an 80/20 option, which means that the governing body would pay 80% and then the staff would pay 20% of the premiums. Again, there's math. The option three is that a governing body can exempt itself from complying with this law. To do that, they have to meet the requirement of the definition of a governing body, or I think it's a local unit of government. Bloomfield Township is defined as a local unit of government within this law. We are not. We're a unit, a component unit of a unit. So we cannot exempt ourselves, but Bloomfield Township can, and they do. So we are left with options one and two, hard cap option or 80/20.
So Bloomfield Township does not exempt themselves. So that's why we only have options A or B to?
Bloomfield Township does.
They do, but they have the option to do that.
We are not them.
But we don't have that option.
Because of the way the law defines what a govern, a local unit of government is, we don't meet that definition.
Okay, I got it, thanks.
Yep. And so what that means is that each December, you as the governing body of this local unit of government must decide which one of these options we're going to pick. And we crunched the numbers and there were some documents in the packet. One is the letter that we get every year from the state telling us what those amounts are that we're gonna need to do the math on. And then the other document was a spreadsheet showing you all the different options. I am recommending, and the personnel committee supports this recommendation, to choose option two, which is the 80/20 option. It's a little bit more advantageous for staff. The payment that they need to make is a little bit smaller. And so that is why I am recommending that.
And the deductible is higher, so that's a great thing.
Yes, a few years ago, our, our insurance plan has always been a deductible plan. A few years ago, they increased the deductible and they took away the vehicle by which we try to meet that deductible, changed that up a little bit. So it's been a little bit more of a burden on staff, so.
So there have been some years where we have elected option to take advantage of option A and others, B.
Correct.
And documented those years.
Right, and I think we've had for the last six or seven years gone the 80/20. And I, we just keep in mind that this is the staff and the staff has, you know, they serve us so well that we try to give them the best benefit and the best package that they can have. And this year, it really did align to be the 80/20. And we have to select something. We cannot just say, well, let's think about it. It has to be done this month and, because it reflects January 1st, so.
And I would also mention that this is also an opportunity to, a tool to be used for attracting and retaining staff as well.
Absolutely.
You know, there's some strategy in that too.
Sure.
We wanna make sure that our staff is happy and feels well taken care of.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Is the plan the same, it's just a question of allocation of cost? How many families do we have on the plan?
Oh, it's a great question, Shane. We've got around 20 employees who are on the plan. Families, it's maybe half of that.
So it's 3,000 per family, so that's 30 grand for the 10, and then it's 700 for the others, so that's seven. So it's 37,000 incremental cost to the library.
I mean, that's pretty ballpark-y and rough, but yeah.
Yeah, stuff like that.
Yeah.
And in years when we had financial problems, we went the other way. And we, you know, chose the plan that was advantageous to the library. But now we can afford to make it advantageous to the employee.
And I like the idea that we have to vote on this every year as opposed to having something that's two years because you don't know how the market's gonna change or how the environment's gonna change, the financial environment. So this allows us to reflect and really think it through.
Yeah, I think the first year, we went hard cap because that was more advantageous for the library and there was a budget crunch.
Right.
And then the years subsequent to that, it's been advantageous for the staff. I think in 2017, 18, there was a huge increase in our healthcare premiums. It went up like 12%. And that's why we had been using the hard cap and then we switched to the 80/20 because at that point, the math made sense to, that was the more advantageous route to go.
I just want to mention that the personnel committee is Judy and Joan, and they have served on, they served on that committee together last year and will continue to do that this year as well.
Yes.
So when we say the personnel committee, that's who.
I think it's important to consider that this is a very tough employer environment to hire. We need inducements to make sure our employees stay with us and that we can keep additional employees, which is a key factor in making this decision.
Right, as we have seen, the loss of staff.
We've had a lot, remember?
We've had a lot of, out of retirements.
Yeah, and our healthcare is good. Our healthcare plan is good and it's, it's pretty affordable. I mean, the premium's a little on the high side, but I know lots of other people who pay more, so.
Not as good.
Or pay a similar amount and the deductible is way higher. Or the care isn't as good.
So if there is no further discussion about it, there is a motion on page 30?
It's on page 31.
Oh, isn't it?
31.
31?
Yes.
Okay, and Joy, if you see that, would you read that motion for us?
I move to adopt the 80/20 option as stated in PA 152 effective January 1st, 2023.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and the next item is the director evaluation form.
Yeah.
This is also a personnel.
Sure. As you know, as trustees, one of the main, or one of the most important functions that we have is to evaluate our leadership. And this is done every year. And so what happens is we have a very tight schedule because we are going to go into a closed-door session in February to discuss the outcome of the evaluation. Tara will be sending her, she looks at the questions that we ask and she will be sending her overview of what she's done, what's been accomplished, the things that she needs to work on in her mind, the things that have happened, all of that. And so we'll have that to review. And then it's the incumbent upon you, all of us, six of us, to get that back to both Joan and to me as soon as you can so that we can then take that and assimilate it and extract some of the important ideas so that then we can turn around and then show you that copy so that we can then have our discussion at the closed-door meeting. But it's really time critical that we do this. And Joan and I are available if you have any questions or concerns. But what you saw in the packet here is that it's management skills and communication, community and personnel relations, and it goes through all the different things here. What we do though is we have, we used to have a rating system and it was, we sort of changed that and we had more of a narrative because we thought it was important because our rating system was really super good, really good, good, mediocre. And it was just like, and all the time, it was almost, I mean, you almost would fault them on, oh, you wore purple. I've seen purple, purple and was clashing color orange. You know, that was, I mean, you couldn't find anything, so you had no way to express your opinion. So what we did was we changed the format then. And these are the questions that we've used in the last couple of years. And I think they're the most effective ones that we have. And we do give you the opportunity to ask or give comments so that if you see something that maybe needs to be explored or whatnot. But then what we do is then we will meet with Tara after that and go through some of those comments with her so that she has a better idea and a grasp of where, what we're thinking, what is important. And with the strategic plan, a lot of those things that are concerns we've talked about, we've given us the format to bring those up. So, but as I said, this is really a time-sensitive objective that you guys have to complete. We all have to complete this, so.
I'm sorry, you go ahead.
I was just gonna say that part of the closed session is you all deciding whether to renew my contract for now.
Yes, yes.
So I'm on a contract, yes, and my salary for the year too.
Right, and we will also know at that point what the cost of living increase will be if there is going to be one for the staff, so that we can take that into consideration as well.
I seem to recall there was going to be a form sent out to us.
Yes, you'll get the form. But what will happen is before you fill out the form, wait till you get the information from Tara because that'll be an important component. Because there's things, particularly for our new board members. There's things that, you know, you're so brand new that things might have happened in April that you have no accounting. So make sure you wait till you get that. So really, the onus right now is on Tara's back to get that done.
And I'll mention that once we receive that from Tara, then the completed evaluation forms are due
Correct.
to the personnel committee by January 13th.
Correct.
That's what you have written down.
Yeah, so we have, that's what I'm saying, that we have really a short window. So as soon as Tara gets that, she will send it out. And then, and please do them electronically so that we can extrapolate much easier than having to retype things. That would be great.
Right.
Yes.
So. And you send those only to us?
Right.
Does that go to Tara?
Yeah. So in addition, obviously, even for the two newest trustees, you will also be formulating in your mind your evaluation or your ideas at the end of some things you feel that the director needs to work on, some suggested goals, et cetera. They may be in line with the strategic plan, they may be something different. So, and then those of us who have been here longer, we will have also some other things saying, you know, Tara excelled at putting this together or, you know, putting this together well and we should continue that. I mean, there's just all kinds of things that can be written. Judy did an excellent job of putting everyone's evaluations together last year, but I will be working with her to put everything together.
And it's really just an overview, so we won't necessarily pick every nuance, but we will have those papers. Those papers have to be, because it's freedom of information. They have to be available if anyone wants to look at those. So once we get the electronic copy, there is a printed version that will come out, but it won't be.
That's a good reminder that everything that we turn in.
Correct.
You know, separate FOIA.
Absolutely, absolutely, so.
I really welcome your feedback, so.
It will resemble what you have here.
Similar to this, yes, but it will have room for you to, you don't have to make the spaces. It'll have room for you to answer things.
It'd be a Word document.
Yeah, so.
And you can just fill in.
Right, you can be as brief as you want. If you're not, you know, even after reading Tara's answers, if you still have questions or if you're not, I mean, there's certain things like, I don't know if you know this because I hide it so well, but technology is not my friend. And so when there's talking about things on what you should improve on, you know, yeah, so.
And I think Lyndon sent you the form this evening.
Oh, thank you, I will get it, that's okay.
Okay, and it's my goal to send you my report by the end of next week.
Great, great. So if you do have any questions, please ask Danny, Joan, or me and we will be, do our best, or you can CC all of us and just ask the questions, so. But just know that those questions also will be under the FOIA because you'll be sending those through our library account.
Got it.
Okay, all right, thank you, and thank you guys. This truly is an important aspect of why we're on the board here. Because we need great leadership. We have it, but that's just my opinion. We need great leadership and we need great staff. We need great leadership and we need great staff.
And the February meeting is important because we'll be here after the regular meeting, we'll go into closed session, we'll discuss Tara's evaluation, her salary, and renewing her contract.
And then we bring the session back and we have, then our session comes back and then it's back. So we go into closed door and then we have to end the meeting, so, so the cameraman will disappear and come back.
Yes, thank you. Are there any other questions on this? Okay, then we'll move on to discussing the strategic plan.
Yeah, this is so exciting. We've talked about this for months.
I know.
It's great. Alright, well, the strategic, is it okay?
Yes, please.
The strategic plan draft is in the packet with a couple of changes we made after the November meeting. I just want to say a couple of things about it before I get feedback from you all. First, Catherine is working the welcome desk tonight because we've got some staffing shortages tonight. So I am bummed that she can't be here because Catherine really shepherded this whole process through. She was being modest about me thanking her, so I'm glad she's not here, I can gush about her. But yeah, she's really driven this process through, sometimes I need some herding and she's really good at that. So I'm grateful for her, for her work on this. I also want to thank the planning team, which is Danny and Joan and Anna Puleczuk, our Circulation Department Head, Florence Schenk from Technical Services, Lauren Cottone Ellis in Youth Services, Ed Neemcheck in Adult Services, and of course Amanda Standard for our Consultant, all the department heads and assistant department heads, and you all too for giving, spending so much time that day in September on Danny's birthday.
Thank you, we're welcome.
Sharing your hopes and dreams for the library and what you want the library to look like, so thank you so much for all of that. You probably remember that at our November meeting, we talked a lot about our vision and mission statement. And we had not decided on one at the end of that meeting and asked you all for input, which you gave, so thank you for that. We, Catherine and I were kind of wringing our hands about which direction to go with the input that we had. So she and Amanda and I met and kind of took all of your input and the conversations that we've had and drafted a vision and a mission statement for us. And they were in the, in the, in the report that I sent you. So let's start.
Page 41.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then we'll talk about that and then I do want to go through the strategic directions a little bit and just touch on my, what I think about them and then hear from you. So the vision that we decided to stick with was the place to discover for a couple of reasons. It's, it, it sticks with you, it's really descriptive of this as a building and a place where people love to come. And we felt that place could mean many different things, a virtual place, you know, a place to have a conversation, all kinds of different things. We already use that, that phrase, it's our tagline currently, it's printed in a lot of things. Discover informs a lot of our, the way that we operate, it's the name of our newsletter, that kind of thing. Mission is where it gets a little bit more precise and you're able to describe how you're going to implement your vision. And we use the input that you all gave and came up with, we spark curiosity and imagination by connecting the community to resources, technology, and support. So, thoughts on those?
It is a vast improvement from the one we saw before. I mean, I just, when I read it, well, you, no, I, my eyes rolled back. So I think this is, I, I love, I love the place to discover because it could be, it could be within the cover of a book. So it's just open to interpretation. So I, I think it's, to me, it's so much better. And, and I, I don't think a mission statement needs to be wordy. And I don't think we have to change anything if something's working, so that's my opinion.
Okay.
I like it.
Alright.
Both.
Great.
Sounds great.
Alright.
I'm good with both.
So am I.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Wonderful, strike a home run.
Thank you so much. Yes, woo-hoo, thank you. Alright, well, let's go through the strategic directions. And I'm not going to read these or go through them in detail. What I wanted to do was kind of speak to what I see as the important things that will go under these strategic directions. Knowing that the next step in the process is to have a very nitty-gritty conversation about the goals and, you know, the objectives that we're gonna undertake. But the first one, enhance our core, to me speaks to our collections, our building, and technology. And I'm not sure if you all noticed this, but there's nothing in here about our finances or going for the millage or how we support all these things. So to me, our core is that and our budget. And so I would argue that financial stability is part of this strategic direction. So this strategic direction will drive our millage renewal request plus some other development goals that I have for the library that I'll bring up with you all at some point in the future.
And what page are you on, I'm sorry?
No, that's okay, this is page 42.
Okay.
Strategic Direction 1, Enhance Our Core.
I would, and I don't know if this is, you're asking for this, but I, I would also say that no matter what our budget is or what our financial place is, if the millage passes, if it doesn't pass, this is still our core.
Good point.
So I, I would, I see it as sort of rising above financial situation. That we're, this is still what we're aiming to do despite what happens with finances.
Good point, yeah, I would agree.
So when do we turn this direction, you've mentioned this, but when do we turn this direction into, take it from strategy to tactics to, here's exactly what we're going to do to support or implement this strategic direction?
Good question. In January, Amanda is going to have a conversation with Catherine and me and the department heads and we're going to talk about that very thing. And then I'll be coming back to you all with a list of those tasks or our to-do list or whatever you want to call it.
The actions that are taken to support the strategy.
Yep.
You know, I always think about things from a product development point of view. Product has a certain strategic place in the marketplace, but every year you have to think about what exactly you're going to offer with that product to support that strategic vision. So that's really what's, what's needed as a next step.
Absolutely, yep. So this next strategic direction is connecting the community. And this I see as programming and all the ways that we bring people together around, whether it's our Fiber Arts Club or book clubs or a lecture or Storytime. And I think right now, given all the divisions in society, I think this speaks to the library as an organization that can help bridge those divides and connect our community in deeper ways than, you know, crocheting together. It's my hope anyway. And then strategic direction number three is build organizational capacity. This one, it's kind of an inward-facing strategic direction. And to me, this really speaks to the fact that our leadership team and this board is relatively young in terms of experience here. And that this is a really great opportunity for us to build a new culture, create something new, and move forward into the future on that foundation. So those are my feelings about the strategic plan and, and the things that I want to focus on going forward. Do any of the rest of you have any comments or things you want to say about this plan?
The third strategic direction, I love it. But I want to make sure that we realize that there are people who've been here a long time.
Oh, yes.
And that, and I know we do, but that sometimes when you are used to something, you're going to take that same path every day, it's much more difficult for you to necessarily to, to take a different, to veer off. And so we have to be very sensitive to our staff, our board, our volunteers, our friends, all of those people because some of them people have a way of doing things and, you know, holding hands is very important. So I, I think that even though we want to recruit and get new hires and people who are, are bringing in new ideas and new things, I think that we have to realize that, and I, I, it sort of says it here, but I just want to make sure that they don't feel like they are being lost, that we're just using this to springboard to get new people. And I'll just use the example, when you watch these commercials for Comcast, my least favorite, but Comcast is always saying, if you join up now, you get to do this for $20. And yet the people who've supported it for years and years and years, we don't get that same deal. And yet we're the ones who've supported it and they're, you know, they're trying to. So I just want to make sure that we're all aware that the idea of trying to recruit new people and cultivate new ideas and all these things, that we just have to also fold in everyone, so that's all.
Yes, yeah.
But, and I know that it's there, I do know that it's there. I just, when I read it, I just want to make sure that they know it's there, that, that we support and we understand that, that they're sage advice and, and sometimes we do things for a reason and we have to realize and dig deep to maybe find out why. So I just want to make sure that that's not lost.
Yeah, thank you for that, Judy.
Okay, I, I like the success looks like, I like those bullet points. I guess we'll have to define increased and improved.
Right.
How we're going to define those.
Are you talking about on the build organizational capacity specifically?
No, I was just looking like at number one.
Enhance our core.
No, increased patron awareness, improved usage.
So defining what those things look like.
But I like, you know, I like seeing those bullet points, how we're going to define success.
Or even what our success would be, you know, if we get 20 new patrons, is that what, what we think is successful? I don't know.
I think the measure, yes, exactly. How do we measure it and what is that measurement? If there is a stick we're measuring it by, what does that look like? Quantifying it.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just had one on the, I, I agree, I love the bullets. And clearly, to your point, the next phase would be taking those bullets and sub-bullet 1, 2, and 3, use them. But what is the bullet on page 43, increased awareness of non-traditional collections, what is that?
That's our library of things or our kits, our things that are not books, DVDs, or CDs. So we have library of things.
So not digital, this is the kits?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
You know, non, non-traditional items is a very trendy thing in libraries right now. Libraries have like seed libraries or musical instrument lending libraries.
Sewing machines.
Sewing machines.
Yeah, I remember that discussion.
Yeah, we don't have those, but we have kits and, you know, this, this.
That's what we have today.
Yeah, but this strategic direction gives us a place to explore, expanding that.
And I have to say, I compliment the committee, people serving around here, the speed in which this was done. I mean, you know, we talked about it for a long time, but that once you guys just ran, so.
And I said to Catherine several times that in the, in the olden days, this would have been all we focused on. Like, it would have been strategic plan. We were just squeezing this in around like interviewing and this and that. I mean, it's been such a breakneck pace around here.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you think some of that was due to the consultant that you hired and their
Keeping up track.
organization of the project and their management of the project and giving you the elephant in bite-sized pieces?
Yes, yes, exactly. And my, clear milestones, deadlines, due dates, yeah.
I could also mention that the people that worked on this plan, I feel like no one treated it as an assignment. You know, everybody clearly came with passion for the library and wanting to see it succeed and wanting to have a strong strategic plan. And so I think that that certainly added to.
Yeah.
That kind of.
Yes, you have willing participants.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Interested participants.
Yeah. And so we have an action item here. And that is page 38. At the bottom of page 38, somebody like to read that, Joan, do you have that up?
I, I have that. The Board of Trustees moves to approve and adopt the Bloomfield Township Public Library Strategic Plan for 2023 to 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we vote.
Wait.
Could we just, is it possible to just add in there that we're going to have a follow-up discussion on what exactly we're going to do as a follow-up to the plan? Can we put those words in there or is that unnecessary?
Well, we will, I think that we adopt this plan and then.
Okay, but look at page 46, right in here it says, after the plan is adopted, an activity plan will be complated by. Okay, fair enough, that's how I go. Then I'm, then I'm good, thank you. Aye.
Okay, but that's, but, you know, that's good because.
That's exactly what we're doing.
I think you know, I think we have to do the vote again.
Okay.
Okay.
We can do that.
So we already have a set, we are in the first and second, we just need to vote.
A motion and a second and so, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Wonderful, very exciting.
Thanks so much.
That is exciting.
It's very.
And kudos truly, I know there's two members here.
It's exciting to get to move forward.
Oh, and Joan, three.
Yeah, I'm, no, I mean, I did not as much as Danny.
That's alright, you stepped up a second, so.
You know, for something that, for something that we had all planned on and worked toward for a while, it's very exciting to put this plan into motion.
Could I just ask one question? Let me just say at the front, I was not all that impressed with the organization that was brought in from the outside. Maybe you could convince me otherwise, maybe I didn't see all the work that that organization did. What I did see, I didn't think too much of basically, but perhaps I'm, I don't have a wide enough perspective. Do you, what is your feeling? Would you hire that team again in 2026 for the next plan?
I will tell you that I don't have, this, this is not the first strategic plan that I have worked on. This is the first strategic plan I have worked on with a consultant. So I don't have experience working with other consultants. I will say that, I think it was Joy who mentioned the speed at which we worked and the ability to get, get, get to this point in this amount of time. And I will say that her keeping us on track and setting certain goals by certain times was definitely invaluable because we know how easy it is to, you know, kind of kick the can down the road and just think you'll do it later. She also, again, this is, I, I don't have experience working with a consultant on this, but she did bring a lot of library-specific experience. And that too, for, for me who is, you know, I don't have professional experience in the library world.
Yeah, I didn't feel like she had a lot either, frankly, I.
If I may interject, this is my third and Joan's third strategic plan and we've had a different team each time. The first strategic plan that we had, he was, I can only describe him, and, and again, strategic plans are changing, they're evolving, so they're so different. So for instance, this strategic plan used to be seven years or five years or three years and, and so relegated. This man was like a drill sergeant, he was like this, 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 this. And I felt that he almost put us in shackles where we had to follow his way the other way.
I get it.
I like, and I've been on a lot of strategic plans with a lot of consultants. I think the consultant's role is not to tell us what to do, but to take the information and say, okay, have you thought of it this way? So what, what he or she does is they, they open up different avenues and roads for you to think. So your thinking process is completely different. And I saw that in Amanda. The one, the, the group of four, I really, really liked quite a bit and I thought they were, they were very good. And I know that they were one of the people we had, but I think to give credit to Tara and the team, again, strategic plans are changing, just like mission statements and visions. Mission statements used to be like 20, you know, 20 lines and now they're concise. And so I think Amanda, what she did was unlike our, my first one responsible here where he just said, you know, this was, this was our, this was our window. She's expanded this window and she's allowed the committee to really, because we're the ones who are here. She's not here, she's just saying, my experience shows blah. She's just saying, my experience shows blah. And so she allowed this group, this capable group of saying, okay, this is what we think is important. We know our patrons, we know our staff, we know what we need. Um, tell us how to take all those ideas and put it into a concise document. So I was actually impressed with her.
Okay, fair enough.
That's just my background. And again, um, I have done um, strategic plans at Cranbrook, and I, we, you know, they pay thousands, about thousands of dollars, and they're slick, and they come in, and, and you know, you're talking about a huge organization. Um, and I've done it at all the, all of my organizations have always had a consultant, and I, and she, I thought she did a very good job. But, and again, I'm just using, I'm just telling you about what's happened here at the library, so. And she really is a librarian's strategic plan. This is what she does. She doesn't do necessarily schools or anything like that. So she's used to what's going on, and I think she's really cutting it, and she's looking at the things that we're discussing now. Um, the township doesn't have a city center, so we are it. And so we have to embrace that idea that we have to, we, we have to not be confined, so we have to be able, for people can push, and we'll, we'll move, move and meld with that. That's how I looked at it.
I get it, I hear what you're saying.
I, I agree with Judy, and as the presentations were coming, um, because I'm just thinking, not so much of the first guy, but the, the one previous to this. As I saw what Amanda was presenting, I said, oh, I see immediately why Tara and Catherine went with her. I knew immediately how she was present, just everything. I can't put, tell you right now, but immediately I knew why they had selected her. Her knowledge, the way she was operating, and it happened so fast. I mean, the last one was just, they were longer and more painful.
It was a lot of, and I will say that the, um, I think Keith, because I was at the meeting, we were all at the meeting. I think the survey among our patrons and among the people who are in this community. I know that, um, you know, when you looked at, when you broke it out and broke it down and looked at the components, we had a, a large contingent of people who are seniors and retirees and answering, and because they are the ones nowadays who will take the time and answer surveys. And I mean, the, 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 the first guy, we had these people who gathered at the city um, council. This la, the one before this one, we had people calling, and so it's getting more and more difficult to have people fill out those surveys. And so, um, and I think, and then, you know, every single person has something that he or she likes or doesn't like. And they are hell-bent on making sure that that voice is heard. So you have to have more mystery books, and you have to, you know, you have to have this, this has to be wider aisles. And so that's, that's where their mind is. And so I think what Amanda did with some of her questions is she tried to say, okay, we understand that, but give us another layer of what you, what you like. And, and those, so those questions were important. Um, you know, and as I said, it would have been wonderful if we had more youth. Um, and if the parents had sat down, maybe the parents had sat down, or maybe we could have had it in the library where we have, here's a survey room, um, take a survey. You know, I don't know. But, I mean, it's, and I know it's going to be more and more difficult. Um, we've become a closeted community in the sense that we don't want to be bothered. We don't have to answer our phone. We don't have to look at our emails or our texts. So to get those people to respond, because we do want to know. Um, you know, maybe we do something like the chairs. We had a great response for the chairs. So, you know, just round the, round the, um, maybe next time we do it, we go around the um, library and say, hey, do you like the, the way that these books are set up? Yes or no? You know, questions like that. I don't know. But that, I know that that was probably, because I, I felt that from you, that you, you know, some of the answers were, and they were, they were self-serving, absolutely self-serving. But everyone has their own, I mean, I certainly do, and so you want that, you want it to be told, because that's your opportunity to say something. But then you also want to be more broad-minded. So we're hoping that that's what happens. So, but I, yeah, I, I didn't see, I, I enjoyed working with her. And I only met her the two times, so. Sorry, I didn't go on, on a riff.
All right.
Okay, we can move on to the uh, bank signatories.
Yes.
That is on page forty-six.
Yes. All right, um, so because we have a new president and a new secretary, we had to go through this process again. I think this, well, I won't even say it. Um, so we have updated the bank signatories for the new officers. Now we have our finance coordinator, me, assistant director, all the people at the township. Maybe we won't have to do this for like two years. So, um, but this does require a resolution uh, from the Board of Trustees. The resolution itself is on page forty-seven, so that is what uh, lays out who all the people are who are authorized to sign on behalf of the library. Um, but the motion itself is on page forty-six.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and so a motion is required, and then we have some signatures to get, um, after the meeting is concluded.
Shane, do you want to leave that for us?
I move to approve a resolution authorizing signatures, including similarly signatures for banking services on behalf of the Bloomfield Township Public Library as presented effective December twenty, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, all right, so now let's um, head back to the consent agenda to discuss the items that were removed. And they were um, all number seven, right?
So.
Cash is first, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and so Shane, do you want to?
Do you want to go first, Joan, or me?
Um, yeah, okay. Last meeting, um, Shane or someone asked about the payment to Doran Mayhew. And I thought you had said that that was the last payment, but I believe there's another payment here.
Yes, I, that was a mistake on my part.
Oh.
We got billed for the October, Toby was here for two weeks in October, and so we got billed for that. And it came after the cutoff for the November board, so that's why. This should be.
Yeah, okay, okay, that, just because I, I saw it in the minutes, and then I saw the check, and, okay. Okay, thank you.
So we'll go back and change the minutes. We, they're not on the consent agenda, but the minutes need to be fixed, the ones we, that are in here. You take that out.
Okay.
You got it.
Okay.
Oh.
The minutes say.
Because it says it was the last one, but it was not in fact.
So you think we need to change the minutes? Because that's what I thought at that time.
No, you, the minutes only reflect the meeting.
Right.
I would change it. It's wrong.
Yeah, but it's going to be in this, it's going to be in this.
It'll be corrected in this minute.
Whatever you guys want to do. Um, the other one, the other questions I had was the, look on, on page thirteen, the one oh four, hundred and four thousand, the catalog and patron database.
Yeah.
Tell me more about that.
Yeah, so um, it's a giant piece of software called Sierra that we buy from Innovative Interfaces. Um, everything that, you know, comes into the library, all the books that come in, they get catalogued, and there's a, a bibliographic record that lives in that database. All the copies of that book or that item, there, it's attached to a record in that database. So when you check out an item, your patron record is in that database, and then, then that bibliographic record is connected to your patron record. It's how we keep track of everything, essentially.
Okay.
So it's the, it's the backbone of the library's operations and technology.
And it's annual?
Yes.
And the one just below it, what's the term of that, the Intranet contract?
It's a year.
So that's, that's the Wi-Fi in the building?
Wait, which one are you talking about?
Right below that, Intranet connections, library's internal Intranet.
So that's the Intranet, that's an internal piece of software that we use to communicate with each other. We get our internet service from, through the library network, through AT&T.
Do you guys use that?
Oh, yeah.
The Intranet?
Yes, yeah.
And I didn't have anything until page seventeen. So this is the budget and the update. I, I assume this, it says August. I think, is that the right date? It should be later than that, right?
The amended budget?
So on page seventeen, you see the first column, March sixteenth.
Yeah.
And the second column is August. So it says we're eight months in.
Oh, no, August is when we approve the amended budget.
So what's, oh, so we're, oh, current, where are we, current?
Um, so you're, are you talking about, you mentioned the eight months. Are you wondering where that comes from?
I'm just wondering what the current amount is for this budget. If, if August, if that August does reflect August, is there a bring-down?
It's not that it reflects August. It is that we approve the adopted budget in, we approve in March. And then we approve an amended budget in August. And then the third column is the current month. So there are, there's a zero for the taxes there. And that's because this is part of that time period where we don't.
Right.
Receive any of that income.
We'll be getting that in the next month or two.
So like, for example, the last column, where it says variance eight point two million? Is that, what is that?
It's because we haven't, um, we haven't received that revenue yet. We get it all in one big lump sum at the end of the year.
December, January, you'll see the January.
When do we bring this budget down to current? We don't, we just don't?
It is current.
Okay.
So we just haven't gotten that money yet, because we get all of our taxes in January. So we have to, that's what our fund balance is for. We save, we have um, some, part of our fund balance is assigned. And part of that assignment is eight mon, eight months' worth of operating um, costs.
And when does that start? Month one was what?
Um, April.
April, so we're eight months, it would be now, right?
Mm-hmm.
So end of the year. So these numbers, even though it says August, this is our best guess as to what our revenue and expenses for the eight months?
Mm-hmm.
Got it, okay, thank you. Which is pretty good, by the way.
Pretty good estimate, yeah.
Yeah, we're doing okay. We thought we'd have eight point three eight, we've got eight point four nine. Why would the, why would that number change? Do tax rates change or people change?
Yeah, that's, we, because the March, the number we used in March, um, we had that estimate from like the summer previous. So then by the time August rolled around, we had a much better idea of what the taxes were going to be. So we were able to amend it to a more real number.
Yeah, and like expense, more importantly, we thought we'd spend ten point two, we've spent ten point three, which in an inflationary environment, that's pretty darn good.
Did anybody else have questions on?
E- especially because we had a couple, there were a couple of.
Flunky things.
Yeah, right, and also, you know, we, the utilities, yes, definitely, it, yeah.
And with the, I think Shane pointed this out previously, the turbulence in our, in our finance personnel.
Yes, exactly. Exactly, and, and having to um, hire the outside firm. Um, I just wanted to, again, because you said utilities, I just want to again say that um, what fantastic foresight was given to putting in all the LEDs, because we would have taken, it would have been so much more expensive had we not done that. And as we've seen utility prices increase, um, it just speaks to the fact that that was such a great move. Um, was, was there anything else to talk about there? Okay, um, okay, so can I have a motion to approve the items that were removed from the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And uh, now is the time for any other? Does anybody have any, anything else to bring up tonight?
Just wish everyone a happy, happy holiday in twenty twenty-three. It's a pleasure meeting our new board members, and congratulations on the swearing-in. I think you guys just wanted to have him back every month?
I feel like this throughout the timeline here.
I know, I know.
We can have our refreshments and.
Yes, if my children left any cookies.
I did, I see some.
Um, okay, thank you very much. And our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, January seventeenth. And um, at that meeting, we will discuss fines and fees, and uh, we will also have our annual OPEB trust meeting.
Do you want to just mention with that?
Sure.
Yes, um, our OPEB trust, OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is retiring healthcare. Um, a few years ago, um, the state of Michigan passed a law saying that our um, post-employment um, obligations have to be at least forty percent funded. And so we established a trust and put forty percent of that money, which had just been hanging out in our fund balance, into that trust. And so this, we have to have a meeting of the trust um, every year, and that's what our January meeting will be. And we'll have our um, investment person from Schwartz and Company, Matt Witty. He'll be here to talk about, give us a market update, because those funds are invested, and talk, and tell us about um, the state of that trust. So the January meeting will be a regular board meeting, then we'll conclude that board meeting, and then we'll have a short break and start another meeting, which will be the meeting of the OPEB trust.
Are you thinking you might flip it though, too, if you're going to talk to, because you were.
I, I looked at how we did it before, and that's how we did it. Um, I cleared it with Matt, he.
Oh, he's fine, okay, okay, good.
Yeah. So the fines and fees conversation shouldn't be.
No, it's usually no more than thirty minutes, and that's long.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, well then, if there is nothing else, I will go ahead and.
One of your votes now, there you go. Good job.